We're too polite. They should have just come in and gotten their stuffs going.
Yeah.
Emily, I got it. I don't think you had it all the way yet.
I'd ask that everyone present be sure to sign in on the table in the back. We're ready? The 12th September City of Pickwa Planning Commission is called to order. We will be following a modified Roberts Rule of Order procedures. We have three resolutions as new business tonight. We'll ask that the city staff read the resolutions. Then the city planner, welcome, Mr. Henry. He's our, this is your first City of Pickwa Planning Commission. Welcome as our new city planner.
Right, my second week.
Okay, great. The city planner will then read the city staff report. And at the conclusion of the city staff report, the city planner will make a recommendation of the city staff. Following that, there will be discussion among the commissioners with the city staff. After that discussion is done, we'll ask the applicant to come forward. The applicant will present any information they would like to present to the city, to the planning commission. And then at the conclusion, and the city planning commissioners will be discussing the projects with the applicant. At the conclusion of that, we'll ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak for or against the resolution. Upon the conclusion of any of that action, we will have a, there will be a motion, a second. We'll, we'll poll the commissioners and the resolution will be either approved or disapproved. At this time, if there are no objections from anyone present in attendance to the aforementioned meeting procedures, would everyone present please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in? Everyone present. Let it be known that all persons present to provide testimony at this 12th September 2023 meeting of the planning commission hereby swear affirm said testimony will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth. All those in agreement, please say I do. All those opposed, say opposed. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, could you call the roll?
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Mr. Bupp.
Here.
Mr. Koenig.
Here.
Ms. Brandon.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
We have a quorum to conduct the meeting. At this time, everyone has had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from August 8th, 2023. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes recommended? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 8th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
We have move and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting minutes of August 8th, 2023 are approved. There is no old business, new business?
Resolution PC 27-23, a resolution to authorize a special use for a self-service storage facility to be constructed at parcel N 44-073860, zoned IH heavy industry.
Mr. Henry, could we have the staff report, please?
Staff report for this being my first one, what I did was I kind of went through and I just took into consideration some of the uniqueness of the site. Kind of, I just made some comments on the plan. The plan, I guess, the low to moderate impact common lot line screen must be established along all common lot lines, notably the northwest and the east. Going around there, we have a regulation that wants that screening. It's assumed that there's an existing vegetative buffer to the south to remain to satisfy the previous requirement. That lot's a little bit unique because it has a drive that goes back into it. So it is kind of screened from the property in front of it. The rear 15-foot setback line, kind of a comment I made is it's unincorporated area to the north of the property. Typically, if it was a budding another zoning district, there would be a 50-foot setback because that's unincorporated, not within the city. It's being treated more as if it were to come in, it would be another industrial zoning. So I believe the comprehensive plan calls for that being industrial use. It was just a consideration. Is that fairly clear to everyone? That north parcel is unincorporated, so it doesn't have a zoning.
Right.
And then the other thing was, was there wasn't really any calculations on the site. Your impervious cover max in the area is 75%. That can be impervious ground. This seems to be exceeding that. So I was just, I recommend having some sort of coverage or some sort of calculation showing that that's to the contrary. But as far as that goes, you know, it's, you know, it's a use in the, in the, in that district. It's acceptable. It sits back in a nice area. It's, I guess, covered from traffic seeing it, whatever. Kind of only the considerations I listed on that.
And the recommendation?
I would move to recommend for approval.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Did we get any kind of comments from anyone in that general area for or against?
No, none, none was submitted.
So, Mr. Henry, these items you listed, are they going to be incorporated then? To make sure they're incorporated into the new plans or, or not so?
I, I would make any recommendation contingent upon these items being addressed or answered.
How about the 50-foot?
The 50-foot, I think that would be up to the commission to make that decision. And again, if it was going against another zoning use, it would be a required 50-foot setback. Being that, that property on the comprehensive, like, land use plan is slated to be industrial if it was incorporated into the city. I don't think it's that big of a deal, but you're essentially, you're locking in that northern property to be in industrial use with that setback if it's granted the way it is. I mean, another train of thought, if, if there's some sort of speculation, if we are exceeding the 75% coverage of impervious area, that could be a space also to, if we kept that setback, we could meet that 75%.
So given the comprehensive plan and possibly the 75% free area, would you recommend the 50-foot setback be held or not so?
I, I don't want to speak out of turn. I've only been the job for two weeks. You know, I just, I just read what I read, you know, and I tried to base this strictly on fact and what the regulations say as opposed to trying to put sort of personal recommendation into it. But if the intent was to use that ground as industrial, then the setback is fine. But if you were ever going to try to throw a subdivision to the north, houses aren't going to want to, you know, locate that close to an industrial use.
But the comprehensive plan does say it would be industrial.
Right, I think that was the intended use of it.
So the 15-foot would be okay?
Yes.
At that, given that?
In my opinion.
Yeah, I, when I looked at it, the, the impervious issue, the stormwater areas all would be concluded in the non-impervious acreage, correct?
Correct.
So it's intuitively, it looks like they meet the requirement. Has anyone, I mean?
On, on just the parcels, the way I was looking at it, it looks to be fairly close because where there's not building, there's drive. And there wasn't a lot of vegetative.
Vegetative, but there's that large stormwater basin.
Right, but I didn't know if that would recommend, if that was actually 25% of what that was. My, I guess my point is typically when you drew a plan for that, you know, had I been earlier in there, I would have had a comment of something, you know, showing what is the percentage of impervious area here. But, you know, kind of when I started, it was right away, make this recommendation. So I kind of did the best I could with the time I had.
Any other questions of the commissioners? Hearing none, is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Could you please come forward and state your name and address and the information you'd like to share?
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman. My name is Tom Fitzpatrick with Storage of America and Vice President of Development with the company. And we have offices at 4225 West 62nd Street in Indianapolis, Indiana. Kind of our headquarters, as you may. I, I do believe our engineer, Gresham Smith, has taken into consideration that 75% with the site plan development. And this is just a conceptual plan to kind of identify how much square footage we believe we can obtain from, from this site. So that, that's something that we work with and it kind of gets tweaked as we move forward. This is our 20th anniversary as a company. And Robert and Joanie Walker started the company in Novi, Michigan, and have been developing storage ever since. We opened up our seventh site in 2018. And this one here would make our 41st site in just a little over five years. So we've, are a growing company. We do a very diligent market study on our areas, similar to the applicant that's behind, next on the agenda. I think he did a very nice market study for his product as well. And I look forward to hearing, seeing what he has as well. But we identified the area as being in need of storage. And we have requested this use on the property. We surround our site with a decorative cast iron looking wrought iron fence. But you can see through it, it's a security fence for security measures. And we utilize a fortress arrangement when, when we're developing our site where we use the backs of the building for some of the security and things of that nature. But it also, we have that decorative fence that's surrounding the property for security. We also have cameras, closed circuit cameras with, that are monitored. I can take it right off my phone and I can monitor every site that we have in our company right from our phone, every camera that's working. Sometimes those cameras don't work, but most of the time they're all working and things of that nature. And it's all for security. We do a very minimal lighting package. The lighting is basically wall pack units on the units pointed downward to keep all the light in the site. But it also provides security for our tenants. We have limited hours where tenants can only access the sites between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM at night. Sometimes we take those hours and shrink them a little bit depending if we have any criminal activities that try to take advantage of those hours. So it does happen in the industry and just about anybody in the, in the industry will tell you that it's not immune. You know, just like residential areas, they're not immune from crime. But we try to minimize it by that way. We have a gated entrance. So when a person rents a unit, they punch in their key, they get a key number. They punch in their four or five-digit key number. And then that allows the gate to open up and they have to punch it to get out as well. And that's a security feature for us because it allows us to know who came in and who came out. Sometimes if it's after hours, like somebody leaves at 11:05 and they punch it in, the gate will still go up to allow them out. But we won't call the police or have the police come out there just because they're leaving a little bit late. So, but if it's at 2, 3 o'clock in the morning and somebody's, somebody's trying to get in or out, we'll know with motion sensors and things of that nature to allow the police to come and help with any issues. We don't allow any hazardous or flammable materials into our storage units as well. We, we also have most recently limited the amount of lithium ion batteries. We recently had a fire at our Flint facility and fortunately it was contained right away with a fast-thinking manager. But we've now eliminated lithium ion batteries from being allowed in our facilities as well. This site here, we generally would probably have about 650 to 700 different sized units. Between five-by-five units, going up to 10 by 25. Kind of depends on the market, on where we develop the concentration of units. Sometimes you get like 5%, five-by-fives and 10% of the next size. But our operations department determines that and it just, it really doesn't change much interior layout and things of that nature on there. So we believe that this use is, it really is consistent with the uses in the area. You're looking at, you know, the camping company across the street and, you know, all those vehicles, it's basically a storage, outdoor storage. But we're having enclosed storage in our facility, no outdoor storage of vehicles or anything of that nature. Our customers do utilize a kiosk. You can't really see it in that kiosk, but there's two monitors. And one of them is up on the wall, approximately the same size as that monitor that you have there. And another one that might be a little bit smaller than that, that's touchscreen. And it allows them to select the unit that they have. They want to select that's vacant and based on size and things of that nature. And if, if the, they have any problems doing that, a live person comes on to guide them through it on the upper monitor. So within 30 seconds, that live person comes in to help that customer looking for a site. So it doesn't take long to do that. It's, it's pretty much a nationwide, a lot of the competition is going that route with a kiosk operating. Unfortunately, that's the market, that's where the market is heading. And we try to stay competitive with that market. And it also allows us to keep our, our prices competitive with the, with the other areas as well. So we, we pride ourselves on very clean, organized, safe and secure environment for our customers and look forward to bringing this product to the City of Pickwa, Ohio.
How close would the nearest live person be?
I think this one would be in Dayton.
So if the door won't open, I have to wait a half an hour?
No. Oh, if a door won't open, we can do it remotely with a, with a.
You can?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Like, we can give them a different, we can give them a temporary code that will work and move through it. And sometimes they don't work. I don't know, for some reason, some codes just don't work. But it is, we've seemed to work that out pretty well with giving them an alternative code to get them through the gate or giving them a, like a temporary one.
No, I was talking about the actual locker.
The actual locker? They get a, they get a lock. There will be a lock right on the, on the locker when they get there that has a different code that they're given.
Okay, and then you physically pull it open?
Yep, yes, sir.
Okay, so there's no mechanical stuff going on?
No, and it can go right back to the kiosk if there's a problem with that. We haven't had any problems with that part of the equation yet, so. We just recently gone through this transition from having live people to a kiosk system. So it's a growth thing.
And all the registration to sign up would be on the kiosk and all that, right?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions of Mr. Fitzpatrick? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public, either for or against Resolution Number PC 27-23, that would like to come forward? Seeing none, any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution PC 27-23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number PC 27-23. The Planning Commission has studied the request, conducted a public hearing on the matter, and has established findings that indicate the proposed expansion will be compatible with the intended use of the real property, will not threaten the general health, safety and welfare of the surrounding properties, and the adjacent property values will not be negatively affected. Granting this special use does not consume critical land resources that are uniquely suited to facilitate the needs of the community for economic development or other important needs and conforms to all other applicable plans, policies and regulations of the city. At this time, could you poll the commissioners?
Ms. Brandon?
Aye.
Mr. Bupp?
Aye.
Mr. Koenig?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Resolution Number PC 27-23 is approved. Moving on to Resolution Number PC 28-23?
Resolution PC 28-23 is a resolution to authorize a special use for a self stor, excuse me, self-service storage facility to be constructed at parcel N 44-074310, zoned IH heavy industry.
The staff report, please?
So similar to the previous one, it's a, again, the common lot lines would need screening, basically being to the north and the south. I'll give that only a second to get there. Kind of, it would be the same thing with the 15-foot setback. Again, that would be on the west line, so it would be very similar to the previous one that just did. I mean, they actually bordered the same parcel. Again, on the impervious area, again, it seemed like the whole thing was, you know, covered with a, it was with some sort of hard surface. And then kind of dissimilar to the other one, this property would have two frontages along Scarborough Road. One, you would need screening from the road. But two, kind of the, you know, usage of it, it would be the intent to get that right-of-way for the city and develop a street that would have to go through there. So you would essentially, you would have a store and lock on each side of a street with two frontages. But I guess that would be the part that is different from the one before is that you're basically granting two frontages to a store and lock on an industrial property.
Any questions of the staff?
Would each of the parcels then have their own stormwater management? Or would it all be basically directed to one?
If it was two parcels, each parcel would have its own.
Okay.
And I'm assuming you're recommending this one as well based on?
I, I mean, assuming.
As before?
Assuming that the commission is acceptable with the use and having the frontages there on that property. It's very similar to the other one. This one, obviously this one's just a lot more visible than the other one. The other one was kind of tucked behind things with frontages. This is right there invisible.
So you're recommending approval?
Contingent upon you guys being okay with that condition. And I apologize, I mean, I came in, I had this, I think I did this on my second day. Not being native to Pickwa, I don't know everyone's opinions on how things roll. So I was completely reading from the book. You know, what's the rule here, what's the rule here, what's the rule here? So it was kind of putting everything together to come up, to get the packets out on time. So everything there is, you know, it's not more opinion. It's, you know, what we actually have in print somewhere.
And this extension, the, the right-of-way through basically the middle of it is in order to be able to access the lot behind not only these, but the previous case?
Yeah, should something go through there, yeah, we'd want to develop the street all the way to that west property line.
Now, will, will both sets of these from this one owner be developed at the same time with an area left open for the right-of-way? And then at some point, the right-of-way goes through? Or what's the plan for when the right-of-way goes through?
I believe the right-of-way would have to be dedicated within the development.
Okay.
The improvements would have to be done later to be accepted by the city, assuming they were built to city's specifications.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Again, no, no input from anyone along that area, other owners or anything for or against?
No one from the area.
No input at all? Okay.
Any further questions? Hearing none, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Could you come up, state your name and your address?
Dan Burns, 95 Countryside Drive, Troy, Ohio.
Thank you.
Okay, what, what would you like to present?
Same as last month. This is our plan that we're looking to do to expand our facility. Like I said, last month, we, we got an existing facility in Troy. You approved last month for the six acres on 25A. And we're looking to expand. The need is here at Pickwa to, to grow another facility on this side of town. And I believe this is a good location. Got some great ideas. I think, you know, the concern of what you just spoke a minute ago about the right-of-way concerns me to a degree of the expectations for the street to be put in. I just wanted to make clear that we would extend it far enough to get into our facility to the north. The streets are, Scarborough Drive is already far enough to go to the south for our entrance. But just to be clear and fluent that we would only, our thinking at this point was just to extend it far enough to get an entrance off of Scarborough into the north facility. Not all the way across, I think it's 350 feet all the way across to the west line, property line.
Is that the city's understanding?
I, it would be my understanding. And I apologize, I've worked with a lot of municipalities. I mean, typically when we have a right-of-way dedicated, we, you know, continue through that. I mean, otherwise we would have to come back and get temporary right-of-way if we were ever going to extend to the west if it wasn't ran all the way to the edge. But I don't know that that's my call.
That's not been my understanding to do from the time that we began working on this property. So that's why I want to bring it to someone's attention, that I don't have a budget in there for some $800,000 to put that street across over to the west property line for something I don't, I don't need. And I'm, I'm not even sure that that property to the west is annexed into the City of Pickwa. It's not.
I was going to say gen, and correct me if I'm wrong, but generally when, when a, a street is extended, it's extended to the end result of the, the next parcel. It's generally not stubbed off in the middle of the, the length of a parcel. So it's gen, so in this case, if you stop at the entrance, I'm assuming you mean like the kind of little four-way crossing there?
Correct.
Generally, streets don't stop. Generally, streets don't stop in the middle of a parcel, they're extended to the length of the next parcel.
So really, what you're telling me is, for me to develop on the north side, I need to extend the street, and my response would be, I'll just do it on the south side of that property then?
So you're, so the street-
I don't need to extend the street to be able to access to the south side.
To the south?
Yeah.
And, and I think there, again, that would be a call of the city that-
Yeah, I can't answer that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This will be set up just like last month. You'll be in Troy. If there's a problem, they call, you drive up, deal with it.
Absolutely.
Right?
We have a facility in St. Mary's, same thing. We've got somebody within two minutes. I mean, things happen. I mean, we all know that, when you got four, five, six-
It'll be nine minutes, right? It won't be two minutes, right?
Oh, it'd be less than that. The person that runs our facility also is only, I'll say, five or six minutes away. Yeah.
Okay.
Lives on the north side of Troy here, so-
Okay.
Yep, he's in the middle of both.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
That's the only question that I have. Any other questions?
Not of the applicant.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak for, against Resolution Number PC 28-23?
Good evening, Commissioner. Not for or against, but just to clarify or try to provide you with a little information on your questions about the roadway extension. Previously, in our zoning code, it was silent. It didn't speak to whether or not the developer was responsible for extending the roadway or making the improvements along the roadway when they're enhancing or developing along a frontage. In the code Pickwa document, it does require that the developer develop the entire length of roadway if that's a part of what's happening here. So if the applicant is foregoing the, the portion on the north side of the road, and the existing roadway extends beyond the driveway or the access point to the, the proposed improvements on the south side, then they wouldn't necessarily need to extend the roadway. But if, if it's developing on both sides, then the entire frontage needs to be developed, the roadway needs to be developed as well. Makes sense? And that, again, it was, in our old code, it wasn't addressed. In code Pickwa, it was made sure that it was addressed. Either way, there's an existing sanitary sewer that runs along the west side of the property and then turns and runs down Scarborough Drive, so there's utilities meant through where the right-of-way would be dedicated already.
So the extension he set on the south side that he was willing to do is acceptable, is what you're saying? Right?
What I understood is if he, if, if he foregoes the development on the north side of the roadway, and just does what's on, what's proposed for the south side of the roadway, the existing roadway improvements extend far enough along that frontage that it would serve the driveway for the south track, and it would be okay. He wouldn't have to extend the roadway.
But he's asking for both, correct?
So you would be amending the application at the applicant's request, if that's what he desires to do.
And that, and that would be acceptable to everyone, I guess?
If that's what is approved by this body, then yes, when we receive the, the actual zoning permit request with the construction documents, that's what we would approve, based upon our review. And through that permitting review process, we would also be looking at calculations of impervious surface and, and the coverage area, and all those particulars that come with those documents that have a higher level of detail. Does that help? Any other questions?
So the amendment would, would include the south side only, then?
At the applicant's discretion. They've presented a request for both sides with the roadway right-of-way. If that were, is what is being requested, then the roadway improvements would have to extend to the west lot line. If he's, if, if he, as a result of this discussion, asks that the application be amended to remove the, the improvements on the north side, then you could authorize the special use of the lot to the south for the proposed improvements, and there would be no additional roadway extension necessary.
Okay.
So if we keep it, if it's kept as it stands, it needs to be extended fully?
Correct. Per, per code Pickwa requirements, yes.
So we have to amend the resolution?
If the applicant so chooses to amend the resolution.
We have to figure out what he wants to do.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Sir, could you come forward again? Mr. Burns?
Yes, sir.
So we need to amend the resolution, and you're only gonna develop the south entrance?
Correct.
Is that the understanding?
Correct.
And then the north entrance, that's agreeable to the city that they don't do the extension to the north? Is that correct?
Correct, as, well, as far as the, if we're doing the south, we were comfortable with the existing entrance, but if we were going to develop the north as well, we would want that extension to the-
But you're, wanna do the south?
South only.
And not do the extension?
At this time, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So you're officially amending your application to only include the south lot?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It would, that's just a matter of record of the commission, the proceedings here, so that, that'll be included, and we don't need to amend the resolution. Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
There, there was no public comment? Any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution PC 28-23.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve and adopt Resolution Number PC 28-23. The Planning Commission has studied the request, conducted a public hearing on the matter, and has established findings that indicate the proposed expansion will be compatible with the intended use of the real property, will not threaten the general health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding properties, and the adjacent property values will not be negatively affected. Granting the special use does not consume critical land resources that are uniquely suited to facilitate the needs of the community for economic development or other important needs, and conforms to all other applicable plans, policies, and regulations of the city. This time, could you poll the commissioners?
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Brandon?
Aye.
Mr. Bupp?
Aye.
Mr. Koenig?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Resolution Number PC 28-23 is approved. Moving on to Resolution Number 29-23.
Resolution PC 29-23, a resolution to consider construction drawings for water and sanitary sewer main extension on Wrecker Road.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm gonna take this one. This is a project that's related to the Ascend Medical Marijuana Dispensary that's being constructed on East Ash Street. What they've realized is there is no water and sewer on East Ash, as their surveyor originally indicated. It was faulty information. So the solution to that is to bring water and sewer along Wrecker Road, which is the rear frontage on the property. And so they have prepared construction documents showing what the improvements would include. Those documents have been reviewed by our, our staff, the engineering office, the underground utilities folks, all the different departments that look at these things, and they found the drawings to be in conformance with our design standards and the city's requirements. And so the documents are before you this evening for Planning Commission approval of the reference construction plans. This would not only provide water and sewer for the subject site, but I would point out, it would also enhance our ability to, at some point in the future, develop the four acres to the south, which is also suitable for development activity. Questions?
Any questions from the commissioners?
Would the Wrecker Road area be shut off during construction, or how, how would they handle that?
It'll, it'll be shut down. There'll be a period of time where they extend out into Looney Road, and there'll actually be a lane closure on Looney Road while they connect the water main. The sewer is back far enough, it won't disrupt Looney Road, but because of the depth of the sewer and the size of the equipment and the narrowness of the road, they'll have to shut it down to traffic during construction.
And will that be extended time, do you think? Or, I mean, how long's that take typically?
It's about 400 feet of improvements. I know they're really eager to, to get the utilities to the site. They've got their building pretty close to complete, and I suspect they would complete the roadway improvements inside of three months. It'll, it'll move pretty quick, once they get out there and get going.
Because that's a lot, a lot of action going on on that Wrecker Road now, because you can't get into the gas station very well without using the Wrecker Road sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, the, the fuel station is with, with limited access, and, you know, when they sighted there, they, they, they kind of knew that they were getting into that. We'll do our best to manage the, you know, when they, when they connect out to Looney Road, that'll be a couple days. They'll lay the pipe and be out of the intersection, so then they could reopen that so that the first driveway is accessible for the fuel station. Same thing as they move further to the east, once they get past that second driveway, they can open it. Vehicles will just have to, you know, be driving on gravel for a minute until the roadway bed is repaired.
And the utilities will be sized large enough to be able to handle expansion on the four-acre lot?
Correct. They're sized to the minimum requirements for water and sewer for the city of Pickwa standards, and also based upon what the contemplated lane use is out there, which is eight-inch water main and eight-inch sewer. There, there's not gonna be that much volume there.
Kind of feel bad for the gas station. They've been messed with a bit on this project because of the... They had to close down part of it at the end and everything, but I guess that's all part of the construction of the marijuana subtlety, I guess.
Yeah, and, you know, the, it's the nature of, of development. You have inconveniences for a minute while things are happening, but in, at the end of the day, it'll be a nice roadway improvement for them as well.
Yeah.
And, and clean up their access points off of Wrecker.
Yep.
I didn't look close, Chris, but does that include repaving of Wrecker?
It will. By the time they run the water and sewer line trenches, there won't be any pavement left. Yeah. It's only 24-foot wide. It's a, as I understand it, it's a service road that was installed to service the back of the houses that used to be there after US 36 was improved, and there was limited access right-of-way put in place.
Will it be the same width, or will it be a little wider? You know?
I think it's planned to be 24 feet, so it, it's, it's not a accessfully wide road. It's just a, it's a service road, is how I would describe it, and I think right now-
Is that about what it is now?
It's probably 20, 21 feet wide now.
Yeah, it's a little narrow.
Yeah. So it'll be, it'll be adequate for safety service vehicles to get through, without, without any restrictions, and be able to accommodate the type of traffic that one would imagine there. And ultimately, as the four-acre site to the south develops, it's hard to know what that might look like. It could very well integrate that roadway into the site, but it's, it's speculation at this point. Good?
Any other questions? Hearing none.
Obviously, we would ask your approval so that we can turn the contractor loose and get the project done.
Okay.
I've got the next item, I was just gonna stick around.
Okay, thank you. This is a public comment. Is there anyone present either for or against Resolution Number PC 29-23? Hearing none, do I have a motion on Resolution Number PC 29-23?
I make a motion to re- approve, I guess, Resolution PC 29-23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number PC 29-23. The Planning Commission has studied the request, conducted a public hearing on the matter, and has established as fact that the proposed construction plans will conform with the stated intent of the street design requirements, will not require any additional improvements to the existing roadway beyond what is proposed, is compatible with the standard drawings and design criteria of the city, and conforms to all other applicable plans, policies, codes, and regulations of the city. At this time, could you poll the commissioners?
Mr. Koenig?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Ms. Brandon?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Bupp?
Aye.
Resolution Number PC 29-23 is approved. That concludes our new business. The other business that we have is on the capital improvement plan. Who's, oh, Mr. Schmiesing? Okay.
Thank you. So as part of the capital improvement plan process, we bring forward the capital plans that are contemplated for the next three years to the Planning Commission, and this is really meant to be just an opportunity for the public to be aware of what's included in the planning document, ask any questions, and for the Planning Commission also to be, to be abreast of that topic as well. You'll recall, a couple years ago, when we started this process, we, we put into place a procedure that we follow, so as we approach budget time, staff is identifying projects that are going to be coming up in their capital budgeting. They are referencing their planning documents for their particular departments, as well as the city's strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, and other documents that inform the discussion. As we program these projects, I think it's important to understand that each of them go through a ranking process, so the projects are self-scored by each of the department heads that submit the project, and there's a set of criteria that looks at everything from what would be the economic impact, to is it a regulatory requirement, or are there some other exceptional benefits to the public, so on so forth. So with those ranking criteria, the project is scored, and then that helps the department director to prioritize those projects as they look at the available funding. What the capital plan has evolved to, and it's still a work in progress, is essentially a queue. So it's, it's a holding place for projects that have been identified, and somewhere where we can start to identify the estimated cost of the project and potential funding sources. So as they get put into the document, it's a point of reference as we go forward in the budgeting process, as we look at the, the financials at this moment in time, and try to forecast where we will be through the next three years, which is not all that easy to do, but you do your best. That then results in where you think you're gonna be with your capital plan for the next three years. So while most of these are identified as 23, 24, 25, or 26, certainly some of them could slide up, slide back, or fall back even further outside of the three-year window, depending on what the, the economic environment is and, and the city's finances. I won't go into every sheet, there's quite a few there, but as you'll see, they're broken down by the different areas of responsibility, which kind of correlates to different budget areas. And then for each project identified, the sheet gives a, just a brief description of who the sponsor is, that is, which, which department head is leading the, the efforts for this particular project or equipment purchase. What is the project about, a little description, and then what year do we think that the funds are gonna be utilized to perform the work? So in some cases, it might be a multiple-year project, in other cases, it might hit a single year. And then at the bottom of the sheet is a breakdown of funding sources that have been identified. If the funds have already been allocated, or it's anticipated that it's gonna come from that particular source and nowhere else, we show the dollar amounts that correspond to the estimated cost of the project and, and where those funds come from. So you've got the general fund sources, you've got the enterprise fund sources, and then grant funds, outside monies that come into the city. And that's, that's really the, the gist of it, and so each of the projects have that breakdown. We, as part of the process, presented this to the Capital Improvement Review Committee, which consists of two city commissioners and Chairman Koenig from the Planning Commission, and they, each of the department heads present their items, explain what the project is, answer any questions, then that review committee offers any suggestions in terms of things that they believe should be tweaked or adjusted in the plan. So we went through that process a little under a month ago, and as I say, the next step is for it to come here for, for public consumption, if you will. Happy to respond to any questions.
Is there a way to get some public input, let's say, on... The, the whole secret on this is the rating, the ranking, and that's where, there's a lot of judgment there. And have we gotten a lot of public input on, on some of these rankings that, I mean...
So the, the criteria is designed so it takes out a lot of the subjectivity, makes them fairly objective, but each reviewer is looking at it differently, right? So within their, their bucket of projects, they're consistently- So within their, their bucket of projects, they're consistently using the criteria the same. The, I think the, the real point there to what you're asking, Joe, is that the community engagement is in the planning initiatives. So if it's, you know, the hydraulic canal project, there's a lot of community engagement, or the low dam removal project, there's going to be, there has been, and will be more stakeholder engagement. You know, whatever the project may be, there's always a certain element of stakeholder engagement, identifying who those folks are and making sure they're a part of the discussion. And then that really helps to define the significance of that project as it relates to the, the community's strategic goals and objectives, and how well that aligns with the efforts that are underway to advance those, those goals and objectives. So the, the ranking is more so for an internal, to help us know that if we only have this much money, but we have this many projects, which one to go first, right? And the, the project need is driven by those things I described, is identified as a priority through a planning document, and the, and the stakeholder engagement that led us there, is identified by a regulatory agency as saying we have to do it, is it a higher ranking because there's funding sources and that, that bumps it forward, whereas some other projects might not have a sufficient funding source? So there's a lot of variables that go into it. This process right here is, is part of the, the public saying, you know, I, I'm glad it's in there, but I wish it were ahead of the other one. Just because it's not ahead of another project doesn't mean it's not also going to happen either. So sometimes there might be, it might be fifth priority-wise, but eight projects might be funded that year, depending on what that particular budget that's supporting those, those projects or items has available.
Yeah. I guess, what I'm thinking of is, let's say the public has a different view of the rankings than, than what this says, and let's say they're willing to raise money to help fund this. Could that affect the ratings if you've got an outside group? For, for example, let's say the Hans Pavilion, okay?
Great example.
Yeah, for example. I didn't see that in, maybe I missed it, but it...
It's there.
It is?
It's in here. It's an unfunded project, but it is in here.
Okay. So let's say it got, whatever ranking it is, if another group is willing to raise money and say, if we can raise a million dollars, could that help jump the rankings up because you've got more funding available? Could that change the rankings by a group saying they would raise a certain amount of money for whatever it is?
So we get, you know, occasionally you get private donations for a particular project. It's like UVMC is willing to offer $270,000 to help Lock Nine Park.
Right.
So it's a specific donation for a specific project. That certainly helps when you look at all the different ranking criteria, that's one of them. If there's a available funding source, then that, that scores higher in that area. The other dimension of that that needs to be carefully considered is, just because you can fund the improvements, that's great, but you still have to be able to operate it, maintain it, and justify the investment being made and the continued cost to operate it with reference to what outcome it's producing or return on investment it's providing for the community, whether it's tangible or intangible, and justify that. So there's a lot of, there's more needs than there are funds.
Right.
And if, if you have, it's, it's great if you've got business persons or individuals who want to, you know, this is really important, we want to support that, we're going to raise the money for that, but if it starts to slant the priorities away from the other things that are equally important, and now we're diverting funds to prop this up because it's got some, some support financially, or whatever the case may be, it gets to be a little bit of a slippery slope. Not to say that it doesn't matter, there's relevance to what you're saying, but there's, there's other things to consider, I guess is my point. If, if the funding is there for the, you know, for the Fort Pickwa Plaza, let's say for example, there was funding that was offered to the library for capital improvements, and then there was also funding that was put into a, an account for the first year, however, however many years of operational cost. That fund is gone, and so now it's an ongoing struggle to maintain the operational side of the budget. And so that's where we have to be careful, and, and we could say the same thing about the swimming pool or other things in the community. You can build it, but you have to be able to operate it, and some projects will generate a greater impact in terms of the, the tax revenues or the quality of life benefits that are provided and are easier to stimulate, or they do more to stimulate the providing for the operational cost, or justifying it, whichever the case may be.
Were there any comments on the CIP from the public? When we, it was posted on the web.
It was posted on the web. The CIP review meeting was advertised as well, so no one attended that. We had no comments, it's been posted to the web. I, I shouldn't say no comments, I'll generally get someone in passing who'll say, hey, I saw that was out there, that, that's good information, I'm glad you're sharing it, but there wasn't any specific comments.
The only, the only thing I'm wondering about, you, the Swift Run Dam Safety Project Phase One, Echo Lake Dam Safety Project Phase Two, and France Pond Dam Safety Project Phase Three, as, from this CIP meeting, I understood that this, the money that's forecast here doesn't really align with the scenarios that were proposed, and is there any timeline on the selection of what scenario is the state, the city is going forward with, to the state for these dam safety projects?
So the, there's kind of three different elements to that discussion, and right now, as I understand it, the intent is to try to set aside some funds, knowing that we're going to have to do something. And so we can't, one solution would be a number so big that the funds are, just aren't there. And so if we can get to a solution that is more viable, we're, we're allocating funds now, setting them aside so that we've got something to work with when it's time. The status, the timeline, ODNR being the, the regulatory agency that's really driving the, the issue, or forcing the issue, there's the Swift Run Lake area, which has the existing spillway, there's the, the hydraulic canal that connects that body of water to the Echo Lake body of water, and then also to the France Pond body of water. So you kind of have three separate pools, but you really have Swift Run and its spillways that are one area of concern for ODNR, and then everything else, because that's all dependent upon the, the spillway near Ziegler Road. The France Pond and Echo Lake, anything that enters into those two bodies of water, the only way it gets out is on the spillway at Ziegler Road, which, because of the maximum probable rain, and that's not the right acronym, but whatever their terminology is, 27 inches in, in 24 hours, that, that spillway can never even come close to handling that. So what we have done is we've approached the state with a proposal for, work with us on the Swift Run Lake area, allow us to reduce the classification of the dam so that it's not treated as critically, and we can make some modest improvements to the spillway and satisfy their concerns in that area, and demonstrate that we're, we're being responsive, we're trying to address their concern. And then we'll continue with the engagement with the community and ODNR and the professional engineers and everybody that needs to be involved, and see what kind of solution we can figure out for the other areas that is palatable in the community, because it's really a community values proposition. In addition to the fiscal impact, you know, it's, depending on what you do, it could have a very, a, a, a huge visual impact. So there's a lot of things that need to be understood, and if the community really wants those bodies of water to remain, but that means ODNR is going to require us to reinforce all those levees with some sort of soil amendments and/or concrete treatments, and/or to increase the height of them by three feet or something to that effect, okay, well, that's a lot of money. How badly do you want to retain those bodies of water? Where's the middle ground? So what are we willing to fund as a community? It's not a city problem, it's a, a, a city of Pickwa, a community problem, that we need to, to make sure that whatever the residents say they value, that they're also understanding that the cost implications that come with that.
So there's no hard and fast suspense, and nothing has been forwarded as a solution to this ODNR to date? And as I understand, these money, like the $4 million for the Echo Lake Dam Safety Project Phase Two, you just have a money figure. You don't have supported with features of work.
We have...
Costed out to account to $4 million.
There was an initial engineering solution that was running a concrete channel through Fountain Park, obliterating the park features, adding a spillway north of Hardman Field, and creating a drainage outlet through Veterans Memorial across 66 down to the river.
Yeah, I remember that one.
That was done without a lot of public engagement, and when that came out, we said, whoa, wait a minute, this, this is having, this is more than a financial impact, it's having a huge impact on, on the assets in the community that citizens enjoy and want to keep.
I think the city, you've done a crackerjack job on, you know, presenting scenarios and engagement and those kind of things.
Right.
I just wondered where you're going next step.
So then, yeah, so then we, we took a step back and went through that whole planning process, engaged the stakeholders, and kind of educated folks on, you know, we can do this, but this is what the work will entail. We could do this, but this is what the, the budget would entail. And so now we have a menu of options, if you will, and they range from, you know, the low end to something that none of us would ever want to have to pay for, and that's where this $4 million is coming from, it's a placeholder. It's probably not enough, but we don't really know what the...
I just wanted to make sure everyone answers.
Answer is.
It's a placeholder, because in previous meetings, the number is quite a bit higher, but this is only a placeholder, and there's, there's really no features of work supporting this, this, based on this $4 million, you're going to do this channel improvement, this dredging, these kind of things. You don't, you don't have any, that level of fidelity with these numbers.
Correct. It's $4 million, knowing we're going to have to do something, but we don't know what something is yet.
Something, okay, great.
You're basically stuffing your cash envelopes, waiting until you need it.
ODNR has basically indicated that they're not going to go away, but as long as we continue to demonstrate progress, they'll work with us.
Right.
So that's why we broke off Swift Run, because we think that one's something that's more doable, and then let's continue to work and to figure out what the solution is for the other parts.
Okay, very good. Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? And we've had no, no public, well, we can open it up to public comment right now, but there's been no public coordination or impact to date. I think it's a good idea doing the CIP, but no, no public has contacted the Planning Department or Development Department yet. Okay.
CIP review meeting was advertised, this meeting, you know, the item was posted, but we haven't received calls or any specific input from anyone.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, is there anyone present that would like to comment in regards to the capital improvement program? We don't need a resolution on this, it's for information and comment. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there any further topics we need to discuss with regards to city with the commission before we adjourn?
No, sir. I'll just, real quick, take a minute to do a proper introduction. Chad Henry, our new city planner, he's, he joins us from, previously with the city of Greenville for 21 years, and has a degree in urban planning from Miami University. Go Redhawks! And...
I know he's a good man.
Yeah, yeah, and so I've kind of thrown him into the fire here, so he, he's, he's very good at what he does, so I'm confident he'll be able to provide you with good guidance and do some good things, and continue the, the progress that we've made in the planning area in our community, and so join me in welcoming Chad aboard, and if you have any questions, feel free to call him.
Okay, thank you. Before we adjourn, is there going to be any further discussion with...
That's what I was just about ready to state, are we going to go over that in the meeting, or...
I, I...
Okay.
Get it off air.
Okay, well, that's, okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a move and a second to adjourn, all in, in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The Planning Commission meeting on 12 September 2023 is adjourned. And we're going to have a meet...